No, no, I didn't, uh, it's not even a good story, I was walking upstairs. Yeah, no, I, last week, as Jeff said, he stayed to take the Virgo, had chairs to get this whole place. Taking stuff down the next day and walking back up this step. At the time, no, no big deal, whatever, go hitting four or five stops there and Jeff, then I had to sit Robertson in this. Sitting in the car for an hour and a half, getting it nice and stiff and everything like that. Thursday, Friday of last week, I, I couldn't walk, you know, I was sitting there. Shuffling myself up and down the hallway there at the house. This is the morning, there was a, there's a little bit of the coffee, you know, the lawyer's coffee.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call our Tuesday, August twenty-sixth council meeting in order, if you would, please rise and join us for a prayer and the pledge.
Please bow your heads with me. Our dear heavenly father, we thank you for this day and for the many blessings you've given us. Lord, we thank you for this beautiful community that we're so blessed to be a part of and reside in. Lord, we just thank you for the opportunity to be in these chambers this evening, to consider the issues and the decisions that are before this council. We thank you for the council, their volunteerism and their willingness to consider these issues and to be a part in the important decisions for this community. Lord, we just ask that you give them wisdom and discernment this evening, that you help them to consider all things that can affect each decision that they make. Lord, we just ask that you be with each person present this evening, that you guide them, that you direct them, and that you help them to have safe travels back home. Lord, we just ask that you lead us and you guide us and forgive us where we fail you. We say all these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
I'm Mayor Kennedy.
Here.
Chairman Pro Tem Lewis. Councilwoman Opelinger.
Here.
Councilwoman Pettit.
Here.
And Councilwoman Blades.
Here.
You have a court.
Thank you. All right, this time we'll move on to public comment. Uh, might be me. So if you can't hear me, let me know, I'm gonna try to move this away a little bit. A citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Each citizen is limited to three minutes and the council will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of city business and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or on pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date. Hayden, come on up.
Hello, council.
Hello.
Yeah, I got one little question about the flag.
Okay.
I am wondering if it got approved or not, or denied?
So it, it's gotten neither so far, so last time we talked, you had a concept of your, of your flag, and I think everybody was pretty open to the idea. Um, I'd asked if you could stop by the community development office right outside there, so that way, what they'll do is they'll take that image, you get it on approved size, where you can all see it. And then, more importantly, submit that to, you know, if we wanna go get bids for how much it's gonna cost, and we'll discuss who's gonna pay for it in terms of, you know, where it comes from the city or, or whatnot. So the first step, really, to getting that going is if you could stop and talk to them, or talk to Carrie, um, bring that image that you had.
Okay.
And she'll put it together in a packet and put it on our agenda, so that way we can discuss it up here. We have to, we, in order to vote on something, it has to be on the agenda, so that's how you get it there.
Yeah, I got, I got, I sent it on email and I was just wondering, and nobody's responded to the email.
How long ago was that?
That was about like a month ago, for this email.
Okay, do you remember who you sent it to by any chance?
I sent it to, um, Ms. Gregory.
I don't know, I'll have to check and see.
I talked to her this morning because she had an initial email this morning, uh, with him asking for the status, and she said she didn't have an email prior, so it may have went to a spam or something.
If we missed it, I apologize, but we'll, we'll take that and we'll put it together, Carrie will put that together into an agenda item, so keep an eye on the agendas.
Okay.
Once it's down below, then that's when we're actually gonna discuss and vote on moving forward, and we may have questions for you as well.
All right.
But, it hasn't been denied, we just, uh, we just have to have it as an agenda item, so it sounds like maybe somebody missed, wait, email went to spam or something, so we'll find it.
Okay.
Will that work for you?
Yes, sir.
All right, appreciate it, thank you for reaching out.
Have a great time.
You too.
You too.
All right, having no further public comment, we'll move into council forum. Uh, Councilwoman Pettit, you want to leave us off?
Um, I don't think I have anything to report, I've been out of town, so.
And I had no meetings, so it was a nice quiet two weeks.
I attended the downtown project golf tournament, and that's been about it.
All right, we had a park board scheduled this month, but we did not have a quorum, too many were actually traveling and were not able to make it. Uh, other than that, I did give a, a small kickoff, which I warned the Aurora Downtown Project, I'm not a man of many words, so, at the golf tournament this Saturday, so. It was very, very warm this past, I guess it was Saturday before last, uh, I'm, so I'm, I hope everybody made it through all right, because what was it, eight o'clock, it was already three hundred degrees, so. But, uh, they, they fought through it, so. All right, moving on to consent agenda, this will be for the approval of minutes, uh, the city council regular session minutes on August twelfth, and August twenty-twenty-five appropriations.
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda for the city council regular session minutes and the August twenty-twenty-five appropriations.
Second.
Uh, motion second, please vote.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
I abstain, I was not there.
All right, moving on to, uh, did I miss old business, yeah, seven dot one, second reading of ordinance number twenty-twenty-five dash thirty-three fifty-two, financial disclosure. Counsel, any further questions about this or comments?
No.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the second reading of ordinance number twenty-twenty-five dash thirty-three fifty-two.
Second.
All right, motion second, please vote.
Motion passed.
Thank you. New business, eight dot one, oath of office and penning of new police officer, Stephen Nelson.
Uh, do you, Stephen Nelson solemnly swear that you possess all the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of police officer, that you will support the constitution of the United States and the state of Missouri, the provision of, provisions of all laws of this state affecting cities of the third class, and the ordinances of the city of Aurora, Missouri, and that you will faithfully demean yourself while a police officer of the city of Aurora, Missouri, so help you God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Uh, I stole this guy from the Stone County Sheriff's Department, Fair and Square.
Nice.
I had lunch with the Stone County Sheriff today, and I told him I didn't feel bad about it at all. Congratulations, and we appreciate having you.
Appreciate it, council.
You bet.
All right, eight dot two, resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash twenty fifty-seven, Aurora City Hall exterior restoration bid.
That's me.
Yep.
Uh, so.
I think it's that one that's on, yeah.
I think it is too.
Yep.
Uh, so Carson Mitchell got the bid because of, uh, they'd had, it within their bid, uh, ah, the word just left my mind. What?
Prevailing wage.
Yes, they had in theirs already prevailing wage, wage, the other company that had the lower bid did not have that in there, and once, once they factored in those numbers, and that put them way above where we expected it to end up, so. We are going with Carson Mitchell.
Okay.
So as far as, I've looked them up online and had, have had a few conversations with the guy that was here at, at a couple different times, and they are more than capable of doing the job and restoring city hall the way it needs to be done.
Okay, and the only question I have is for those who haven't seen the original bid, because it was a while ago, where the original request for bid, uh, they kinda covered what we're doing, and you give kind of, you give the highlight of what they're gonna be taking care of.
Yeah, so, all the stucco on the building, they're, they'll dig down to the, to the footings, they'll structure any footings that need to be replaced underneath there, do new stucco, new waterproofing. Then they'll redo all the terracotta above the doors and up towards the, the rooftop, uh, all the stonework, there will be also, the major change for us will be meeting ADA for a ramp going in there, it will be widened to meet, to meet ADA requirements, and it'll be kind of a little bit of a different design for that, instead of it just being the ramp, now there'll be a set of stairs that'll drop into a landing, and then the ramp will come around to the other side, there'll also be, we've had some people request, and we put in there that, uh, for bicycle rack, that that'll be off kind of to the side. Uh, the next thing is the lighting will be redone for the, on the pillars going up through the stairs, the stairs will be widened a little bit more, and those will be redone and replaced. Uh, all the tuck pointing on the building will be, all that old sandstone grout will be grout, you know, we shaved out and they'll put in all new grouting, so.
Roof?
Roof is a different project, but yes, it, it is, and we're waiting for them to get done with, uh, one more school, I believe, and then we're next on the list.
Okay, I do have a question, um, I must, may have misunderstood you, did you say the ramp is gonna have steps to go down into the ramp?
Yeah, o- off the front side of it, it'll have stairs that'll go down to, to a landing, and then the ramp will come around the other side.
So how does a person in a wheelchair be able to get into the ramp?
Because there's a, the, the ramp's on the other side, and it'll just swing around, it'll, it'll have stairs coming off from the north side, so that people wouldn't have to walk all the way to use the ramp, or they can, those in a wheelchair, and will be able to follow the sidewalk and come into the ramp and hit the landing.
Okay.
I noticed they had significantly a longer date estimate, the other two were one twenty, and they said two thirty, I think that probably is more realistic, but I was wondering if you had any commentary on that.
So here's, here's where I think they're at with it as far as getting materials, but I think the biggest thing is with the start date and doing the grouting, that if temperatures get below, I think it's forty-two degrees, then they won't be able to do any grouting and all those things, so I think they put in the extra dates for weather and stuff like that, that's what I'm assuming they're gonna go by, plus I know how material, with me being the building inspector, how materials have been running with certain things that, even though you may have stuff on a list, if they don't have it, then it's trying, you know, trying to get all those pieces in place.
Okay. All right, any further questions, comments, council? All right, I'll make a motion, we approve resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash twenty fifty-seven, Aurora City Hall exterior restoration bid.
Second.
Uh, motion second, please vote.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash twenty sixty, municipal alcohol policy for the Aurora Recreation Center.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
All right, so this was a collaborative effort, this was put together by myself, Carrie, and the city attorney, with the city attorney and Carrie taking a lot of the credit for this, because I am not a lawyer, and a lot of these words are big for me, so. Uh, basically what we wanted is to put together a policy that we could use, um, just to help the community, if they wanna have an event, have an party where they could have some guidelines on having alcohol within the facility. Um, so if you looked at section, I believe it's section six, A five, that's the, with insurance and liability, that's a section that would require any event organizer to have a third-party insurance if they wanted to have alcohol in the facility, regardless of, of requiring a license or not. So, um, I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, we can go further, Ms. Carrie can probably offer some more insight, um, but whatever, whatever, you know, this is for y'all, this is our recommendation to you, so.
I do have a question. I believe in there it said something about when they do serve the alcohol, they have to have a security person or something like that?
At the city's discretion, so.
Okay.
They're not, it's not an automatic requirement, but I believe the verbiage in the agreement is based on the size of the, uh, event and type of the event, that at the city's discretion, we can require such, and it would be at the event organizer's expense.
Is there a certain qualification that a security person could be, or does need to be?
Uh, not, not according to this policy, all, all events within the facility will always be staffed by one of my staff members at all times.
Sure.
Um, this was just an additional, you know, possible requirement based on if the event was large, uh, was after hours, what, you know, what type of event it was, but we did not put any qualification in here for what that security personnel needs to be.
Well, we discussed, uh, myself and Justin, city attorney, was, having the city's discretion on that allows us to offer that to off-duty police officers first.
Okay.
Um, and then if we don't have anybody that's available or wants to take up that overtime, then we would have, uh, the event organizer, organizer provide such, either the equivalent of that, or somebody that has some sort of training.
Okay, I just would recommend, I would feel more comfortable if we knew what a security person was, I think we need to have a criteria of what they are.
Just to add to that, the, the, the contract does require, uh, that the type, number, and qualifications of security is to be determined by the city also.
Okay, but I, you know, I just feel like we need to have a standard.
You wanna have it in the agreement?
Yes.
Yeah, we can certainly do that.
Yeah.
Um, are there any specifics that the council would want that to be, or do you just want us to put some specifics in there and bring it back to you?
Um, I don't know if Wes would have any recommendation, because, you know, I'm not in that field, so I don't know really what to look for, so.
Missouri's requirements on being a security officer, uh, basically is that you can successfully convert oxygen to CO2. Other than that, there's no real certification whatsoever.
Okay.
So if you wanted to add something, um, to it in the agreement, as, that we do a background check to make sure that then, they themselves don't have some kind of criminal or, uh, background or whatever, but.
Okay.
Um, there's not a, there's not a, uh, certification. If this is being opened up to police officers as a, uh, and I can open that up to my staff, and also maybe to the sheriff's department staff, I can guarantee you, somebody will probably pick that up, um, on those events and take the extra dough, so. Probably will, probably would happen, very rarely, but we wouldn't have that ability, but, um, if you wanted, if you wanted to add in the agreement that the, that the proposed security person can successfully pass a background check to be performed by the city, I, I, I kinda think that would be the best you could do, probably.
Okay, I would rely upon, I guess, Wes and the city attorney of what they would recommend, but I just, I just want to avoid somebody having a big party and saying, oh, my brother-in-law, you know, he's a big guy, he's a security person.
Sure.
So I just wanna make sure we have a standard.
Sure.
So, anyway.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's my only comment.
I had a couple of questions about, so do we anticipate these events where alcohol is allowed to be during business hours, as well, where recreation is occurring for members?
Some do, so like, for example, we had, um, a graduation party, a college graduation party earlier this year, that wanted to have alcohol at it.
Yeah.
And that would have been an all-day Saturday event, so yes.
Okay, my, my only, and I read through it and I didn't get the sense that, so, so I guess I'll say what I'm, what I'm thinking, and maybe you can tell me whether we actually covered this. I wouldn't want an event where alcohol is served in a commu-, even a community room where it wasn't kind of isolated from the recreational areas. Um, and I, the reason why I say that is the, the par C where it's community room definition, you know, goes through, and it says, uh, not, including but not limited to many rooms in recreational spaces. Um, I kinda feel like recreation spaces are, are a no-go for me in relation to this policy. Uh, if I'm thinking through it, I mean, there's really no reason I would want you consuming alcohol and then being on equipment or being on court, I know they might want to, but I kinda wanna separate those for both purposes, one, to limit injury, and two, to make sure that we don't have kids playing, and we have people, you know, that, they're kind of in their spaces, and we can wall that off, so that's the only thing, I don't know that that was really.
That is something that we kinda went back and forth on a little bit initially, um, we discussed the community rooms being the only area that alcohol could ever be allowed. Uh, but then the discussion kind of turned to if somebody wanted to rent the full gym for an event that wouldn't be athletic or recreational in nature, that would take that out of the equation, which is okay, but that's just, and that's one of those things that we went back and forth on, so we're happy to reconsider that.
Putting it that way, I could see how you have like a, something where you, you know, a banquet or something where you, you've done that, I don't think that's probably, that's probably out of context of open hours, maybe, I don't know, I just, that, just, think, think that over, I just wanna weigh, and we're, and we're talking about a very slim percentage of cases here, but. So I don't wanna make a mountain out of a molehill, but that's, that's the only thought I had, was some way to make sure those don't mix, you know, during business hours. After hours, I think we have a little more leniency with where they might go in the facility, but.
Absolutely. All rea-, all reasonable, we'll take a look at them, come back to you with a.
Was this a discussion item, or was this an actual?
It was an action item, but I expected this to possibly be a starting point, so if you guys wanna table that for us to bring back these specifics, we can sure do that.
What kinda, do you want us to postpone it to the next meeting?
That should be fine, yeah.
What is the September?
Ninth.
September ninth, okay. I'll make a motion to postpone resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash twenty sixty, municipal alcohol policy for Aurora Recreation Center until the September ninth council meeting.
Second.
A motion second, please vote.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Hayden.
Hope you feel better there.
All right, eight dot four, resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash twenty sixty-one, Little League agreement.
Counsel, we've had some recent conversation, uh, around some of the legalities within this agreement that you're familiar with, um, what I've brought back to you, um, let me start by letting you know, I made a mistake, and thank you, Councilwoman Pettit, for pointing that out to me today. Um, I left out the, uh, payment of utilities and whose responsibility that was going to be, so, um, but aside from that, the agreement is basically, uh, similar to the agreements that we've had in the past, major changes that you're going to see are that Little League is taking over, uh, quite a bit of the duties in terms of weed control, um, any kind of additional turfis and things like that, that they want to have applied to the fields and the general area. They're taking over management of all the trash, um, having a trash receptacle on the property to take care of their fields. Um, so a lot of the physical labor in, in terms of field management and ongoing maintenance, they are offering to take some of that over. Um, the only thing that we've added that would be a significant difference would be, uh, dirt. So we've, we've regularly added additional dirt, but we wanted to put some guardrails around that, so, um, this would be limiting to two loads of dirt, as you see in the agreement, um, in every two-year period. Um, and then other than that, everything is pretty well the same, so our guys would continue the mowing, we'd continue the brush hogging of that ditch area, um, and all the things that we've typically done. They're a very motivated group, um, and are very excited to continue this agreement, they've doubled their league size, um, in the last year, and they're very excited to continue the partnership, so. Unless the council has any issues, obviously I'm happy to answer any questions, but, um, I would ask that if you're considering approval of it tonight, maybe you just make the motion to amend that the city will cover the utilities, since I missed that, and then I can just change that and go ahead and get it taken care of.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty-five dash twenty sixty-one, Little League agreement, to also include the city paying for the utilities.
Second.
Uh, motion second, please vote.
Motion passed.
Thank you. All right, so first reading ordinance number twenty-twenty-five dash thirty-three fifty-three, tax levy, and before we start this, we will have a public hearing for this. So I will make a motion to open the public hearing for the ordinance number twenty-twenty-five dash thirty-three fifty-three, tax levy.
Second.
A motion second, please vote.
Motion, motion passed.
All right, public hearing is now open, if anyone would like to speak, please come up to the podium and state your name. Going once? Going twice? All right, I will make a motion to close the public hearing for ordinance number twenty-twenty-five dash thirty-three fifty-three, tax levy.
Second.
Uh, motion second, please vote.
Motion passed.
Thank you. All right, resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash thirty-three fifty-three, tax levy. Any questions or comments, council, you've seen the public notice and the documentation provided?
I'll make a motion that we approve the first reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash thirty-three fifty-three, tax levy.
Second.
A motion second, please vote.
Motion passed.
Eight dot six, second reading of ordinance number twenty-twenty-five dash thirty-three fifty-three, tax levy.
I'll make a motion that we accept the second reading of ordinance number twenty-twenty-five dash thirty-three fifty-three, tax levy.
Second.
A motion second, please vote.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Eight dot seven, first reading of ordinance number twenty-twenty-five dash thirty-three fifty-four, Aurora City Hall restoration financing. Eddie?
Good evening, everyone, nice seeing you all again, I'm Eddie McLean with McLean and Company, we've been working with you for a number of years on this project, or on projects, and this one, and the last, it seems like for about a year or two on this one. Uh, we really are very happy with the terms we got on this, we are, what we did.
Yeah, it's a little, it's a little spicy.
Yeah, and what we did is we offered this, this issue to all the local banks. We received two proposals, interest rates, uh, two proposals from them, and we reject them, we reject them both, they were both too high. I started offering this to other institutions, and at the same time was negotiate, you know, and continue to negotiate with the people's community. Find, I, uh, when I, and the other institutions I was talking to were other banks, um, underwriting firms, and, and I said, look, here's where I think it should be. So you guys have to do your due diligence, but come on in, and in that time, um, I, people's bank came back and said, what are you looking for? Here's, and, so they went, you know, from an adjustable rate of four point six percent, adjustable annually to a fixed four point seven, we wanted something under five, so we were just very happy that a local bank stepped up, it stay, you know, and is, wanted to be your partner in this. We, we spent, and Carrie knows, a week going back and forth with, with institutions and them, uh, talking to them, and they'd came, if there was a num-, you know, they wanted a, they wanted to keep it adjustable, different ceilings and floors, we want, we wanted fixed. And we also wanted callable at any time, that gives you the opportunity to pay this off without waiting any certain amount of time, which is the norm, or refinance it at any time.
Great.
So I think, thrilled with the terms, thrilled with, uh, how it worked out, and really happy that we didn't take it, take this issue out, and I, and, and I think they stepped up because of that as well.
I have no questions, I read through the documents, so.
Remind me the, the year payoff, how much, how long this is gonna take?
It's a ten-year issue.
I couldn't remember, sorry.
It, it, it's a ten-year issue.
Okay.
And I have the, I can give you, it was probably in those documents.
Oh, yeah, it, it was in our package, I think, but.
That's the, that's the, the payments getting.
Okay, I just couldn't remember how long it was gonna take, sorry.
Try to always be prepared.
Good job. Thank you.
My pleasure, this is, it is our pleasure to work for you.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, we accept the first reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash thirty-three fifty-four, Aurora City Hall restoration financing.
Second.
Uh, motion second, please vote.
Motion passed.
Eight dot eight, second reading of ordinance number twenty-twenty-five dash thirty-three fifty-four, Aurora City Hall restoration financing.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-twenty-five dash thirty-three fifty-four, Aurora City Hall restoration financing.
Second.
Uh, motion second, please vote.
Motion passed.
Eight dot nine, special event application, community Christmas.
Man, I'm up here a lot.
You got the hot seat.
Uh, good evening again, council, uh, I come to you tonight for a special event for the community Christmas for downtown, this is our annual, I mean, this is where everybody gets excited, I mean, you, you gotta love the excitement for Christmas for downtown and stuff like that, so it's a great honor for me to be able to stand up here this year to present this to you, it will be November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, they do have a set, they will start setting up about eight AM, but the events will start from twelve and run to seven PM. I know you guys have seen this, there's a few things on here, they do, we will have an ice skating rink, which they have gotten with the insurance and those things to got, to get that part covered. And two, the next thing on that list is they are also wanting that, uh, they've had, uh, golf carts or whatever donated, so that we can, they can pick up people, they will have people that are licensed to run those, that you guys would be okay with them, being able to pick up people from way down at the other end to get them up to, to the vendors and different things like that, so. They, in staff this morning, we all kinda went over what, you know, the normal things of how things would be set up and how it was gonna look, because we will have, there will be tents on the lawn and some different things that. they, in staff this morning, we all kind of went over what, you know, the normal things of how things would be set up and how that was going to look, because we will have, there will be tents on the lawn and some different things that Carrie and I have kind of went over. And tomorrow we will kind of further some things with lighting and, and power for those things, and some speakers around city hall so that Christmas music can be played. Uh, it is recommended from city staffing that it, it get approved.
Um, I think the location's a little bit different this year, isn't it, just around city hall, is that right, not down Madison?
Ashley's going to touch on some of that.
Okay.
I think you fixed the mic, so that's better, um, thank you guys for having me, yes, um, so we've made a few changes for the annual event this year, um, in an effort to, uh, make it feel more, um, cozy and homey, and we want to bring everything to the square.
Okay.
Um, so we will, the plan is to have vendors on both sides of the square, and then we, our kids' area will be back behind the city hall, um, Santa will be in the gazebo this year, and, um.
Ashley, you said behind city hall, is that north, south, where is behind city hall?
South.
South, okay.
I have to do my, um, so yeah, so south, that, that's what we're looking at for location, um, we're looking at, um, the ice rink, it is synthetic ice, um, so it's not, I mean, it's like real ice, but it's not. Um, but, um, we would put that in the lot over here.
Okay.
Um, on east.
You got it.
Um, and, um, we've measured it off and everything should fit, because it has to be on a flat surface, um, and yes, we have met with Carrie about what the city requires when it comes to insurance requirements on that, because obviously that is a liability, so we will be adhering to what the request is from the city's side and obtaining that event insurance, which we attained event insurance last year, um, but this will just add some additions to it. Um, the other thing that I would like to mention that we're going to do a little different this year, um, is we want to have, um, what we call Deck the Wheels Best Decorated Car Show. So this isn't like your typical car show, this is, um, kind of a, more of a, a smaller limited, um, where we would place those, that would be from like four to seven in the evening, so anyone could, um, pre-register to, and there is a small fee to go with that, just so we can know for commitment purposes, um, to register their vehicle, it can be, um, any vehicle, really, it doesn't have to be a classic vehicle, it can be any vehicle. We really want to see like National Lampoon style, like, you know, come aboard, um, obviously, um, we offered it to, it has to be like legal vehicles, um, to be able to drive them here, so no side-by-sides or anything like that. Um, so like motorcycles if they want, depending on weather, of course, and things like that, but just to come and decorate it and it'll be kind of, um, um, you're, you're best dressed, um, so that's, that will be the criteria that we go off of, that, we want to take place from, um, Madison to, um, on Madison up here, but just to Locust, like that would be the stopping point. Unless for some reason we have hundreds that want to enter, um, then we would maybe then at that point need to look at opening up more of Madison. But we're just trying to kind of, you know, since this is the first year doing it, um, we just wanted to throw it out there, we've talked to some different car show people, um, we plan to throw, hand up fly, flyers this weekend at the Cruisin' at Brahms. Um, and so, kind of just want to see, just something else fun to, to, to bring, you know, to, to the event, um. Trying to think, um, yeah, he mentioned, uh, Marionville Powersports has agreed to donate us a couple of, um, I don't know, other golf carts, but.
ATV's.
Side-by-sides, um, to utilize if we need to transport things back and forth, um, but it would just be all locally, and like I said, it would be some of our committee members that would be licensed and operating those, um. The other thing, let's see, um, one of the other things would be, we, we had a request, um, to bring back fire pits, um, but that will also be on a very minimal level, so we're looking maybe like three, not a lot. And it would not be on grass or anything, and they would have to be not like in the open bottom, it would be like the, kind of like using your yard, backyard or something like that. Um, and we do have volunteers that have already agreed to maintain that through the day, um.
They did that the first year, right, didn't they have some?
Yeah, 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 um, so yeah, and then the other thing is in their kids' area, we're looking to have three different types of bounce houses this year, um, to kind of fit all the ages. Um, and then, like I said, with the ice rink and with everything, and then have some, um, little contests here and there, um, we still plan to have the light poles do that, um, for people, that gives people that aren't downtown a way to participate in that if they want, but we're going to open up this year, um, to what we call Christmas on Display, so we're going to try to get all the downtown businesses to participate in a storefront decorating contest to really kind of snazz up, um, downtown as well.
Is the ice skating rink, is there a charge for that, or is that going to be free to kids?
Well, um, right now, um, we have a couple of meetings set with a couple of potential sponsors.
Okay.
Um, so we're waiting to see how that goes and pans out, obviously, if, if we have to, we may have to chart, but our, we want it to be minimal.
Sure.
Um, because that's the point, was the point of this event, is just to have a community event that people can come and have fun.
Okay.
Um, so, we'll have to kind of see how, how that works out, but we're, we're optimistic that we think we'll get some sponsors to come through for us.
Good, I hope so. Thank you.
Sounds great.
Um, I'll make a motion that we approve this special event application for Community Christmas.
A motion of second, please vote.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Alright, staff report, city manager report.
I'm going to be brief as ever tonight, council, um, speaking of the, uh, east parking lot, you may have seen when you got here that the island, uh, parking area island that came out between a handicap spot and another is no longer there, our city staff removed that today and they've gone back with concrete. We've been having some complications with that, cars hitting that, it was kind of not serving a purpose, um, it was being run over a lot and the curbing was being destroyed because of that. Um, in conjunction with that, this upcoming city hall restoration project, they're going to utilize some of that area and clearly make changes to that east parking lot up toward the building. Um, wasn't really serving a purpose and we needed a spot to put an ice rink if you approved an event application, so, all of those things combined, um, that's not something that was in the scope of the project for the city hall restoration, and, uh, Jason and I had already been talking about rehabilitating that area of that parking lot anyway, so, if you wondered about that, uh, multiple reasons that that is no longer with us, um, and makes our parking lot just a little more fluid and easy to drive through, the handicap, uh, accessible parking space is more accessible now as well, because that was kind of a hindrance in some ways. Um, as you know, we had a major water main break, uh, at the recreation center that unfortunately caused us to close for about a day and a half, uh, just wanted to give you an update there, uh, the water repair was all repaired, water leak was all repaired, elevator's still down, we're working with TK Elevator on that, we had some pretty, uh, substantial issues there with some water that came in. Um, but Anthony wanted me to make sure that we give a thank you to Branco, um, Chris at Branco and myself received phone calls at two-thirty in the morning, and Chris answered and was here as quick as he could possibly get here to help work through that issue, so, the same day I received the final document for us to take over that building completely and finalize construction, and I said, you're not getting a signature, buddy, but thanks for coming. Um, and so, those were some things that really just happened, um, in a really interesting way, but they were fantastic to step up and help us work through that, and they're still doing so, so, uh, we're getting through that as quick as we can. We received a donation for a couple more spin bikes for the recreation center, those will be delivered and installed on Thursday, so Anthony's excited about that. Federal protection, uh, we had a budgeted item for the fire alarm system upgrade here within city hall, they started that last week and are still onsite this week, uh, working through that process to get that completed. We are scheduling our annual CPR, AED and first aid training and recertification for all employees, I say annual, we did it two years ago. Now everybody that did it then is up for recertification, but we also have new employees, so all of the rec center staff I think needs that training. Um, so Kami is working, uh, with Chief Hurd and, uh, Chief Coteany, uh, to get our certified trainers all lined out on a date that will work for everyone, and then you'll be seeing us doing that. We're also working to schedule training, uh, we've done some annual for sexual harassment and workplace violence, we're going to add some policy awareness training to that this year, and we're in the process of getting that scheduled as well. New building inspector starts tomorrow, Aaron, I think, wants to throw a party, and then I'm going to force him to take some time off in a bit, um, but that's really good news. Health insurance open enrollment, enrollment has closed, that was a smooth process, and all of our employees have gotten their enrollment done. Um, Shannon asked me to add to, uh, my report this evening, King Food Saver, uh, is what Price Cutter is transitioning to, and she wanted me to add, uh, or just mention to you guys, they're having a ribbon cutting and reopening on Friday, the twenty-ninth, uh, at ten o'clock down there at the store, and also wanted to let you know I did receive a personal invitation for myself and council to be there, I will be out of the office on Friday, so if any of you are able and would like to attend, uh, they've invited us to join for that. And I can answer any other questions you might have.
Um, as you were talking about CPR and such, I'm just going to ask Anthony, do we have an AED at the rec center, two of them, okay, I just wanted to, couldn't remember that or not, okay.
Just a question on the street, you're meeting with electricians, does that include the light poles downtown?
Uh, yes, same electrician, we already had that in the works and we're picking up some more, we've had to kind of change due to ballasts and bulbs and colors and, oh my goodness, but yes, same electrician, he's working through that. Um, we're really needing to assess, um, to make sure that we can carry everything, so if you recall, I got a grant to repair all of our city hall lawn lighting that hasn't worked in many years. So now we're going to be adding all those lights, plus, these ladies are bringing lots of good fun in November, um, so we just want to make sure that we're able to carry all of that, um, and also this lighting that's going to be repaired during the city hall rehabilitation, we want to make sure our power is up to code and up to go on all of that.
So the city hall rehab, that's not going to interfere with their?
It's possible, but the contractor knows he's going to need to yield to us carefully for an event, and they were okay with that, so, we're going to try to schedule accordingly, um, during the pre-bid meeting, we discussed that we'll have an event, um, as well as the roof going on probably in the middle of their project, and we're just going to hope that everything's beautiful and work through it the best we can, and we have discussed an alternate staging area for during those two times if we need to, so that everything's safe.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, council, any further questions for Carrie?
Um, who is the new, who's your helper, Aaron?
Chris Beard.
Chris Beard, you said, okay.
Alright, with that, I will make a motion to move into closed session pursuant to RSMO six-ten dot O two-one for items one and two.
Second?
Alright, a motion of second, roll call vote, please.
Of Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Chairman Prokhorovs, Councilwoman Uplinger?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pettit?
Yes.
And Councilman Blades.
Yes.
And you are now in closed session.
Thank you.
Are we going to move down to the table or?
We need to leave the table, are we going to? Okay, we'll just stay up here.
Okay.
Some stuff for you, I think.
You have some signatures?
Yeah. Whenever you're ready.